No, I have. We will try and speak loudly and clearly so that you can all hear us. Sometimes people in the back row do have a problem in that regard, but we will do the best we can so you see what is happening tonight. And you can also follow a lot of it on these two screens that we have up here. The first thing that we need to consider tonight are the minutes of the last meeting. Has everybody had an opportunity to review those minutes? Anybody care to make a motion with regard to the minutes, their approval?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved in second and all in favor indicate by saying aye, aye. The minutes are approved by voice vote. The first substantive matter on our agenda is variance application 23-15. And we will be hearing a report from the staff with regard to this variance. Joella, Julia, one of you, looks like you've got the screen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is for variance 23-15. It's for some signage on the new Town Pump Car Wash on Harrison Avenue. The applicants are requesting to locate three wall signs and one informational sign on the north facade and then two signs on the south facade. All signs combined will be about 152 square feet in area. They are not adjacent to a public street, which would be varying from the requirements of section 174250 on-premise signs in the C2 zone of the BSBMC. Staff findings, BCBSMC, section 1754060 grants powers to the Board of Adjustments to grant variances in instances where all review criteria are met. There's three criteria that staff has reviewed and will be presented here. The zoning is in the C2. It's this area that's highlighted in the dark blue. Here's an aerial view of the location. It sits right in between Silver Bow Pizza and where the new Highway 55 will be located. The locations of the sign, the east and west are not in review tonight. The north facade, you can see here, they're asking for a logo sign, car wash sign, a logo sign at the rear, and then a directional sign down here that you can't see very well, I'm sorry. And then on the south facade, the car wash sign and another logo sign here. Here's a street view. This is Harrison Avenue looking north and down below it's a view of the south. This is a view of where the signage would go, looking at the northern elevation of the structure. This was taken from Silver Bow's parking lot. Here's the first logo sign. The car wash sign would be here in the center. Second sign, and then the informational or an open sign here. Here's the south elevation. This was taken from the parking lot of Highway 55. Car wash sign would be located here and then a logo sign at the Howard Street entrance. Views looking east, this would be looking at the property to the east ridge, and this is directly across the street, looking at some other commercial properties. This is a view of the west elevation here from Harrison. This would be the Harrison Avenue entrance where they're proposing some signs here. Again, not in question tonight. These ones here are the rear, looking at the building from Howard Street. A variance must be, must not be contrary to the public interest. So directly north is a C2 zone, which is occupied by Silver Bow Pizza as well as other commercially zoned properties. South, as you saw, is also a C2 occupied by Highway 55 and Universal Athletics. To the west, we're also looking at the C2. There's a gas station, convenience store, bank, and a pizza ranch. And then directly to the east is also C2, its vacant property that's owned by Burt Muni Airport. The request is to vary from council-approved restrictions limiting signage to only street-facing facades of a building intended to protect public interest by providing specific zones in which signs are permitted, prevent the proliferation of signs within the community, eliminate signs from having a negative impact on residential property owners, and to preserve and guarantee aesthetic values and protect the natural environment. Section 1742050, section C, number seven, regarding on-premise signs permitted in commercial and industrial zones states that one or more wall signs per building frontage which meet the following criteria: Total wall signs in the, on the area in the C2 shall not exceed forty percent of the building to which it is attached per street frontage. When a business has more than one frontage but does not have a main entrance on the additional frontage, such frontage may contain a wall sign not exceeding thirty square feet. A literal enforcement of the zoning ordinance must result in unnecessary hardship owing to conditions unique to the property. The applicants state one of their facts of hardship is so individuals can make informed decisions and turn onto the property. Staff does not concur. Individuals would be able to make an informed decision based on the freestanding sign that will be located on the property and signs facing the street frontage on both Harrison and Howard. And there are no conditions unique to the property which would pose unnecessary hardship prohibiting the applicant from complying with the signed requirements of the C2 zoning district. The spirit of the zoning ordinance must be observed and substantial justice done. Signs are regulated according to the zone. The placement and physical dimensions are regulated primarily by length of the street frontage and zoning districts. BSBC 174201, the sign regulations intend to coordinate type placement and physical dimensions of signs within the different land use zones to recognize the commercial communication requirements of all sectors of the business community, to encourage the innovative use of designs, to mitigate the impacts of commercial signs on Butte's surrounding natural scenic beauty, and to allow for special circumstances. Also to guarantee equal treatment under the law through accurate record-keeping and consistent enforcement. These shall be accomplished by regulations of the display, erection, use, and maintenance of signs. Literal interpretation of the provisions of this chapter would not be allowed, would not allow the applicants to construct wall signs on the north or south facade of the structure per section 174250 of the BSBC. Total wall sign area in the C2 and C3 shall not exceed forty percent of the facade. Granting this variance request would be offering special privileges to one property owner which is denied to others in the same district. In conclusion, the request for this variance to locate three wall signs and one informational sign on the north facade and two wall signs on the south facade of the property, which do not have street frontage, none of the three criteria were met in this, in our facts of finding. Recommendation would be to deny the application based on findings of compliance with the established criteria. The alternatives would be to approve the variance application based on written findings of facts as described in the staff report with conditions of approval. Continue public hearing on the application with specific directions to staff or the applicant to supply additional information or to address specific items. Thank you.
Julia, thank you, Joella. Do any of the board members have any questions? Yes, Julia? Oh, yeah. Okay. Everything's working fine? I'm sorry. All right, well, our technical difficulties have been resolved and we can resume the meeting. So I would, at this point, I was going to ask if any board members had any questions of the staff with regard to the staff's presentation. So do any board members have any questions in that regard? Nobody? Okay. Now, the proponent, the applicant, can now appear before the board. I'd ask you to go to that microphone right there, turn it on, and give us your case and support of your application. If you could identify yourself for the record by giving your name and address, too, please. There should be a, the chief executive knows.
There you go. I've never been needed a microphone before, but I'll use it this time. My name is Lyle Kousan, and I do work for Town Pump, and I've been a resident in Butte for the last 28 years. So I'd like to thank you all for attending tonight's meeting and considering our application for the variance on the Town Pump Tunnel Wash being built there on Harrison Avenue. Also like to thank Joella and the staff there for the detailed analysis of the project. As you may have suspected, while I appreciate the work she did, I don't necessarily agree with her recommendation. The particular type of car wash will be the third that we have in the state, and the other two being in Helena and one in Great Falls. I do have some pictures here if you'd like to see what they look like in the, in the state.
Yeah, if you could.
And there's two for each one of them.
Pass them around.
Two pages involved, yep, perfect.
Thank you.
And these pictures give a pretty good idea what they look like. And specifically, if you look at the signs on the towers, which we're talking about, the variances for the north and south, you can see the size and relationship to the building on that. We're not talking about great big huge signs by any means. And then a good deal of the signs are also informational type signs. So we're pretty proud of these facilities and believe they bring a value to each of the communities and, as it will, to Butte also. The sign that you see is actually what's recommended by the company that makes the washes, and they also designed the building, so it's not even a Town Pump design you're looking at. They're called a Tommy's Wash. They don't, of course, take into local codes on there, that's why I'm here. And I also have Rayanne from Allstate Signs who'll help out, too, with the presentation, any questions you might have. They base the design on what they believe is going to be minimum needs to properly identify what the building is about for the traveling public. I'm sure you've all been watching the progress of the building going up. And as, as Joella said on that, the Silver Bow is just directly to the north, and the operating business to the south is Universal Athletics and Highway 55's there, but I don't believe they're operational yet unless it just happened on that. So they're relatively close to where we're at. It's a narrow piece of property, and there's two entrances, one from Harrison Avenue and one in the back from Howard Street. We do expect the majority of the traffic coming in from Harrison Avenue. It just makes sense for the amount of traffic that's on each road. The reason for the variance process is obviously to allow an applicant to present their findings for why a particular code doesn't work for either an existing or a new building. Virtually every city in the state of Montana has this option because they realize that every code, while it's necessary, it doesn't always fit every situation. Sometimes exceptions need to be made based on the facts. It's also why boards such as yourself are allowed to consider the facts and make a decision based on those facts. If you look at several of the businesses along Harrison Avenue, they have signs on three or more of the buildings also. That's not necessarily, I bring that up to influence you, but again, they went through the same process at some point to verify that what they had would require, or they would need additional signage. Harrison Avenue's the main commercial avenue for Butte, which has the majority of the traffic on it. It's four lanes with turnouts and a 35 mile an hour speed limit, at least for those that follow the speed limit anyway. The signs we're proposing, the variance, are for north and, north and south, and specifically for the Harrison Avenue traffic. So what you see when you travel up and down the road would be those particular signs. The heights of the signs on the taller portion of the building gives a customer an adequate time to make a safe decision, to make the turn into the property if they desire, and you can, again, see that in the pictures I provided for you. So we live in Montana, so I don't know the percentage exactly, but we're truck country. So if you're in a car and you've got a truck on that inside lane, it's hard to see anything to your right-hand side on that. So this height of these are critical to be able to give them a safe decision or an idea where they want to turn in. We have cities in Montana that restrict signage to six foot, and if you've ever been along there, you're seeing them rubbernecking out the side trying to figure out where they're turning to, and it's a dangerous situation. So height and, and the size of these signs are critical to it. Might also mention, there's a, on the north, it shows an open sign, and that'll only be on when it's open on that. It's turned off at night, so there's no reason to do it. And it's a small sign, too, and a directional type sign. So when we look at the staff's analysis of this, public interest, and they talk about proliferation and overcrowding of signs, it's our belief that two signs in the south and three on the north is certainly not an overcrowding or proliferation on that. And the separation on them is such that it's not going to be taking a lot of time to be able to look at these signs. It's a glance, be able to read them and make your decision. So they're actually there for the public interest and not contrary to it. And they also do not exceed the forty percent of the square footage that's allowed on a side for where a variance isn't needed. The staff also indicated in the report that we presented a hardship. We believe it has to do with the narrowness of the property on that and the two accesses on it. One, they're 35 miles an hour, and you're expected to make a right-hand turn all of a sudden, so these signs are critical to allow them to know that, use brake lights for the cars behind the ones coming in. The pylon sign, which isn't part of the variance, will be north of it, closer to Silver Bow Pizza on it. So anyone north will be able to see that, but not necessarily someone in south. And if there's, or north, if they're northbound on that, they could possibly see it, but those that are coming from Walmart or whatever, they're going to have a hard time making that decision. They're going to see that sign and think that's where they make the turn in, and that's not the case there. So we're concerned, again, about that safety for it, and we believe that the hardship that that, that lot had done was not, has to do with visibility. And as I get older, anyway, it's harder and harder to see signs out there. So one of the things that we talk about in the code is that a directional sign has to be five feet. Well, square feet, an entrance sign or something that's five square feet, I, that's not feasible for me. I just can't see it, and I know that there's a good portion of the Butte residents that are also in my situation. So sometimes the code that's written has an idea for it, but again, it just doesn't fit in all situations. So again, I want to thank the planning staff for their analysis. They did a great job on that, but they based it solely on the code, not necessarily to have to do with the residents within Butte or the situation that Harrison Avenue provides because of the piece of property. And again, as I indicated earlier, Rayanne from Allstate Signs is here, and she can give you a couple more information. Any other technical questions you may have on this project?
Thank you, sir.
Hello. Like you said, my name is Rayanne Bilbury. I'm representing Allstate Signs out of Great Falls, Montana, and that's where I reside. Do you have any questions concerning the technical issues of the signage?
I don't. Do any board members have any questions? Appears none of us do.
Okay. And so the only thing I would like to add to what Lyle has already stated is that, as the pictures that he has passed around, just for reference, in the city of Great Falls and the city of Helena, they considered the car wash letters when permitting those permits as directional. They weren't even included in the permits. Not that saying that you're just like Great Falls or just like Helena, but in comparison to the signage, they are exactly the same as what you see on those papers. So if you could just take that into consideration as well, it would be appreciated.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. If you could stay right there, I'll check and see if any board members have any questions of either one of you. Are there any questions? Don't appear to be any, so again, thank you for your presentation. Now I will ask anybody present that would care to speak in support of this application to come forward and do so. So at this point, we're going to hear proponents, people in support of this application. Are there any? Okay. Not hearing anybody. I'll ask if there's anybody present that is opposed to this application and would like to speak against it. Is, nobody appears to be present. Then we'll close the public portion of the meeting and open it for board discussion. Any board members have any thoughts with regard to this application?
I'll, I'll jump in for just a sec.
Okay, thank you.
Weird situation we're in right now. The planning staff has to deal with. We've got antiquated codes, and we're refi, we're redoing those codes right now, so that's where we fit into this weird situation. I agree with the applicant in that every car wash I've ever seen across the country has these same signs across it. It looks no different. I don't think it causes any harm, so I don't, I don't, I guess, long story short, I, I don't really see an issue with what they're asking for, in my opinion.
Okay. Thank you, Stephen.
Yep.
Anybody else have different thoughts or same thoughts?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I think I sympathize with the applicant on, you know, especially going from city to city and different ordinances, different codes, and trying to streamline the construction of these car washes, you know, across, across different cities. However, there's, there's a side in ordinance, and I personally don't, don't see a hardship. And I think any, any approval of this variance does contribute to the proliferation of signs with, with, within the city. Sets a precedent that I don't think I, I personally can seize that, so I would tend to agree with the staff report to deny the variance.
Okay. John or Brian, do you have any thoughts?
I also worry about the precedent we set when deciding to approve signs that are outside of our code, so I would tend to, to agree with staff also.
Okay. Well, got some, some support, but appears to be mostly opposition. Does anybody feel it's time to make a motion with regard to this matter?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I would make a motion to deny variance 23-000015.
Is anybody going to second that motion?
Second.
It's been moved in second, and then we can now vote. I might be missing a ballot. Yours have hidden, you found it? There's a lot of paper up here, so I can see losing it. I do, might have come upon a ballot. Thank you. Beth jumped to the rescue, anyway. Thank you, Beth. So we, it's been moved that we deny the application, so if you're in support of denying it, of not having the signs permit it, you would vote for the motion. Thank you, Karen. Thank you, John. There are four votes for the motion, which, again, was to deny the application, and one vote against it. So according to the rules, the application has been denied, and if you wish to appeal our decision, you can do so by filing a petition with the district court within 30 days of today's hearing, and the first day of that 30-day period would be tomorrow. So you can appeal our decision. Thank you. The next matter on our agenda is conditional use permit 23-3, which is a conditional use permit by Rawning Development LLC to locate a convenience store with fuel sales off of Interstate 15 and German Gulch Road. Is a representative from Rawning Development present? Okay. Thank you. Are you ready to proceed, Julia?
Mr. Chairman, this is conditional use permit application 230003 by Rawning Development LLC to locate a convenience store and fuel, with fuel sales off Interstate 15 and German Gulch Road, legally described as South 24 Township, or section 24 Township 3 North, Range 9 West, Portion E2 SE4 Butte, Montana, per section 17-28-050, conditions of the M1 Zone and section 1738130, special or conditional use permit of the Butte-Silver Bow Municipal Code. The proposal this evening by Rawning Development LLC is the property owner and a proposal to construct Maverick Convenience Store with fuel sales at the southwest corner of Interstate 15 and German Gulch Road. Convenience stores with fuel Convenience stores with fuel sales are considered a conditional use in the RM2 zoning district. The proposed convenience store with fuel sales is a service station, not a truck stop. No truck shall be parked on the premises except during the actual refueling operations per the Butte-Silver Bow Municipal Code, Chapter 172402056. The zoning in the parcel of record is RM2, which is rural industrial, and the area to the east across Interstate 15 is not zoned. This particular site is located in an economic development district with a tax increment financial, industrial financing district designation. And here is an aerial view of the parcel of, of note and of interest. And here you will see the proposed site plan with its location off of Interstate 15 at the intersection of German Gulch Road. We'll review the staff findings. The purpose and intended use of the RM2 rural industrial zone is to provide a location for heavier transportation-oriented industry or services, and ancillary services plus highway-oriented and service activities proximate to the Interstate 15 interchange. Examples of permitted use in this area include manufacturing, machine works and fabrication, large-scale warehousing, logging, agricultural and food processing, and includes existing users REC Silicon, Montana Precision Products, Old Dominion, FedEx Shipping and Warehousing, and Ergon Asphalt, among others. In this particular instance, a conditional use requires Butte-Silver Bow staff review based on 20 conditional use review criteria which are stipulated in the zoning code. A public hearing before the zoning board of adjustment, and the opportunity for Butte-Silver Bow to identify impacts and develop conditions of approval based upon the criteria to mitigate impacts on adjacent properties. We'll now begin to review based upon criteria, the first being location, character and natural features of the property. Located directly southwest of the entrance exit ramps of I-15 and German Gulch Road, this is a view looking south from the parcel boundary in the north end. The parcel is bordered to the east by I-15 and to the west by the Silver Bow Drive-In Theater. The properties to the south and north across German Gulch Road are both vacant. There is a short slope south off the edge of German Gulch Road into the parcel, after which the site is mostly primarily flat, and the parcel is currently vacant. Location, character and design of adjacent buildings. The only adjacent building is the Silver Bow Drive-In Movie Theater to the west. Farther to the south and west is the Montana Connections Business Development Park. This park consists of heavy industrial buildings, operations and infrastructure. Substantial changes that have occurred in the surrounding land uses. The RM2 rural industrial zoning district was established in 1991 and applied to this land and its surrounding areas. To the south, an additional approximate 450 acres of state-owned land was zoned RM2 in 2022. Land immediately east across I-15 is not zoned. Zoning is in place further east for Rocker, Montana. Proposed fencing, screening and landscaping. The applicants propose landscaping Finger Islands adjacent to the building, additional landscaping around the perimeter of the site, and the dumpster will be screened with a masonry wall. In the RM2 and any outdoor storage, including waste, is required to be screened from residential and/or not-zoned land. There is no, are no significant landscaping requirements in the RM2 zone. However, since this is a commercial development proposed in the zone and a long major transportation gateway, it may be beneficial for the business as well as the development of this area of Silver Bow County to install functional and appealing landscaping. The board may consider landscaping requirements as a condition to the conditional use permit. Proposed vegetation, topography and natural drainage. The topography of the parcel is mostly flat except for a short slope up to the road on the north edge of the property. There is some Zone A floodplain to the west of the property and a small smack, small section of water course that touches this property in the southwest corner. Stormwater is required to be designed for onsite detention and retention of additional impervious ground associated with all commercial and industrial developments in Butte-Silver Bow County. Proposed vehicular access, circulation, parking, including that relating to bicycles and other unpowered vehicles, and provisions for handicapped persons. There is currently no infrastructure for pedestrians or bicyclists in this area, nor is there any required in the RM2 zoning district. This type of traffic is generally very minimal in industrial areas, especially those located so close to a major interstate highway. The applicants do intend to install a bicycle rack and the walkway around the building will be ADA compliant. Within the building or with any parking areas installed, building codes will require development to meet minimum American with Disabilities Act standards, including but not limited to restroom facilities, handicap parking spaces and general accessibility. Proposed pedestrian circulation, including provisions for handicapped persons. This might be a dupe. Nope. There is little to no infrastructure to support pedestrian circulation in this area. Safe pedestrian access will be provided for between fueling canopies and the convenience store building. ADA compliant outdoor seating will also be provided. Per the International Building Codes Review of a Building Permit for this or any commercial project, all components of the development will be required to meet the minimum applicable standards for Americans with Disability Act. Proposed signs and lighting. The applicant plans to install directional signage to direct vehicles as well as a tall freestanding sign designed to be seen from I-15 traffic. Given there are not specific clear regulations for signage in the RM2 zone, the board may consider imposing conditions related to signage. All lighting must be designed to not pose any hazard to passing vehicles and to not be a nuisance of any kind. The applicants have stated that all lighting will be dark sky compliant. The board may consider conditions related to lighting. Potential nuisances. The proposed convenience store with fuel sales is a lighter, less intense use than those outright permitted in the RM2 zone. The impact of operations, signage, noise, emissions, smells and lighting associated with the proposed business is likely not any greater than that what is typical of a heavy industrial use outright permitted in the RM2 zone. The presence of a convenience store and gas station would likely increase the traffic on that short section of German Gulch Road and the I-15 ramps, capturing general traffic from I-15 that would not typically get off the interstate in that location. The parcel in question is not adjacent to any residentially zoned or unzoned property, but is separated from unzoned land to the east by the interstate itself. There are residences in that area across I-15 who may be affected by additional traffic on the interstate ramps. However, no traffic associated with the proposed business should drive by or interfere with the residential traffic in that area. While the impact is not as intense as some permitted uses in the RM2, the proposed business would likely impact existing residences and the adjacent business to some degree. Public safety and health. The development will be required to comply with all local, state and federal requirements to ensure health and safety of customers and employees. This includes building codes, fire codes, public works encroachments requirements and others within the county. Staff cannot foresee any potential negative impacts on public health and safety created by this proposal so long as all requirements are met. Use sought would enhance and promote comprehensive development of the immediate neighborhood and community. Given the location of this proposal near the intersection of German Gulch Road and Interstate 15, the establishment of a convenience store and gas station would likely complement existing and future development in the area, both industrial and residential. It would provide a place for industrial park employees, truck drivers, I-15 traffic and nearby residences, a convenient location to buy fuel and/or food and coffee. As infill development, it could support future development while utilizing land already zoned and with existing infrastructure. Conformance to the objectives of the adopted comprehensive plan and to the purpose of this ordinance. This particular area in the comprehensive plan place type indicator is economic driver. Areas where commercial, industrial and institutional development is planned for or incentivized. As stated above, the establishment of a convenience store and gas station at this location would likely complement existing and future development in the area, both industrial and residential. Represents infill development and support to existing and future development in this area. The use classification will not adversely affect nearby properties or their occupants. Heavy industrial users are outright permitted and are the most common business in the RM2 zoning district. The inclusion of the proposed convenience store and gas station would likely not adversely affect the majority of nearby properties, but rather complement them. Providing a place for employees and associated traffic from the Montana Connections Business Development Park to buy gas, food and coffee. There are some pre-existing non-conforming uses in this area. Directly to the west is the Silver Bow Drive-In Movie Theater, which may be adversely impacted by the proposed use. This theater was existing prior to the adoption of zoning. The movie theater relies on darkness for optimal movie viewing and sale of snacks, candy and drinks for part of the business's revenue. The addition of a convenience store and gas station could impact the darkness of the area as well as add competitive sale of snacks, candy and drinks. The uses that are outright permitted in this zoning district, which we were, which were discussed earlier and would not require a conditional use permit, could be far brighter, noisier and more impactful to the operation of the theater. The board may consider conditions of approval related to lighting and sound to reasonably preserve the conditions necessary for operation of the adjacent business. Compatibility of the project with existing adjacent buildings, structures, neighborhood, topography or other considerations. The project is fairly compatible with adjacent buildings in the surrounding area. Most parcels nearby are undeveloped except for the Drive-In Movie Theater, which is also a commercial use. The Drive-In Theater would likely be impacted by any development of an adjacent lot. Farther west is the Montana Connections Business Development Park and associated industrial businesses. Directly to the east is Interstate 15 with some residences across the interstate farther to the east. The surrounding area is typical of that of a convenience store and gas station. Conclusion and board action. The board must determine if the applicants have supplied evidence to the satisfaction of the board that undue detriment will not result from the granting of a conditional use permit for this convenience store with fuel sales as a conditional use in the RM2 zone at this location. Should the board decide that the proposed location is compatible with the proposed use, conditions of approval to mitigate identified impacts should be considered and may be discussed with the applicant. In Section 1738160 for a special or conditional use permit, the decision of the board is required within 60 days and has the option to deny the application based on criteria and give their reason for denial, or the option to approve the application with conditions, and the zoning officer shall issue a zoning compliance permit with conditions specified therein. Mr. Chairman, we're going to read the proposed conditions. The slide represents an abbreviated version of those.
Okay.
I have three pages of them, I'm going to read them into the record.
Very well.
Okay. The staff would recommend conditional approval of the conditional use application 23-0003 based upon the following conditions. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall submit a detailed landscaping plan to the planning department staff for review and approval. At a minimum, the plan shall meet the landscaping requirements of the C2 Community Commercial Zone and include the number, size and species of trees and shrubs and where they will be located. The plan shall comply with the landscaping provisions described by Chapter 17, Section 38, Special Provisions of the Butte-Silver Bow Municipal Code, excluding sidewalk requirements of Chapter 17-38-050. The applicant shall submit a cost estimate from a licensed landscape contractor for the materials and installation of the approved landscaping plan. This cost estimate will be used as the landscaping bond amount plus 10%. This bond can be in the form of cash, letter of credit, surety bond, certified check or other guaranteed negotiable instrument. Condition two. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall submit a site plan illustrating the location of a sound barrier along the entirety of the west property edge sufficient to buffer both the sound and light associated with the site activities. The applicant shall submit a cost estimate from a licensed contractor for the materials and installation of the approved sound barrier panels. This cost estimate will be used as a bond amount plus 10%. This bond can be in the form of cash, letter of credit, surety bond, certified check or other guaranteed negotiable instrument. Condition three. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall provide a site plan and construction drawings, including a photometric plan illustrating location and direction of light on the site, ensuring no lighting trespass to adjacent property occurs. In order to reduce the potential negative impact of onsite lighting on adjacent properties, all lighting must be designed as low glare, dark sky compliant and be directed away from all neighboring properties through the use of directional lighting fixtures. Condition four. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall submit a detailed off-street parking and paving plan to the planning department staff for review and approval. At a minimum, the plan shall include the required number of standard and handicapped accessible spaces and complimentary landscaping in compliance with the provisions as described in Chapter 17-40, Off-Street Loading and Parking in the Butte-Silver Bow Municipal Code. The applicant shall submit a cost estimate from a licensed paving or landscape contractor for the materials and installation of the approved parking and paving plan. This cost estimate will be used as the off-street parking and paving bond amount plus 10%. This bond can be in the form of cash, letter of credit, surety bond, certified check or other guaranteed negotiable instrument. Prior to the issuance, oh, condition five. Prior to the issuance of building permit, the applicant shall determine that there is no interference with the floodplain and/or obtain a floodplain permit for construction. Condition six. The applicant shall submit the required documentation for review and secure written approval from the Butte-Silver Bow Public Works Department for the proposed design to install the approaches in compliance with all sections of Chapter 12-04, Construction Within the Public Right-of-Way of the Municipal Code. The applicant shall submit a cost estimate for materials and installation of the approaches and sidewalk corners stated above from a licensed contractor. Improvements must be approved by the Butte-Silver Bow Public Works Department prior to the bond amount being approved. The cost estimate will be used as the improvement bond plus 10% to secure the installation. This bond may be in the form of cash, letter of credit, surety bond or other guaranteed negotiable instrument. Condition seven. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall submit the required documentation review, for review and secure written approval from the Butte-Silver Bow Public Works Department for the following public infrastructure. Compliance with all sections of Chapter 13-04, Wastewater Treatment System of the Butte-Silver Bow Municipal Code. Compliance with all sections of Chapter 13-20, Water System Regulations of the Butte-Silver Bow Municipal Code, including Chapter 13-24, Main Extensions and Material Specifications. Condition eight. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall submit an engineering plan and analysis to address onsite stormwater drainage in compliance with all sections of Chapter 13-32, Stormwater Management of the Butte-Silver Bow Municipal Code, including the Butte-Silver Bow Municipal Stormwater Engineering Standards and receive a stormwater management permit. And conclusion, or condition nine. Prior to receiving any sign permits, the applicant shall submit to the planning department for review and approval a detailed sign plan and drawings. The signage plan should meet the requirements associated with signage for C2 Community Commercial Zone. The applicant may consider both German Gulch Road and Interstate 15 as the frontage for this purpose. The applicant shall include a separate photometric plan for all signage illustrating location and direction of sign illumination, ensuring no lighting trespass to adjacent properties occur.
Thank you, Julia. Any board members have any questions to the staff with regard to this matter?
I do, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Cole.
Are you, staff, are you able to clarify a couple things for me? One, you, you touched on what could be put in this without coming to this board for a conditional use permit, that, that there's a lot of things that could end up there. You don't have to give examples, but maybe explain that a little better. And secondly, I guess the liberties that this board has afforded when we're presented a conditional use permit versus the just approval through your department. Does that make sense?
Mr. Chairman, member Coe, with regard to what could be allowed in this district, the RM2 district or the rural industrial zone is designed to support industrial uses that are an economic driver for our community. So if a heavy industrial user with an interest in a large-scale manufacturing objective or a packaging objective or a shipping objective were interested in locating on this parcel and were to submit an application to build that, there would be no jurisdiction of this board to say no. It is allowed and permitted by right, and staff has the opportunity to administratively approve that because it is an included permitted use in our zoning ordinance. When it comes to this particular application, what we have in front of us is a conditional use permit, and that allows Butte-Silver Bow, because of the provisions in the chapter and in the industrial zone, in the rural industrial zone, the board is allowed to provide certain conditions to this application, which is used to, based upon the criteria that it was evaluated on. that it was evaluated on, establish mitigating procedures that would limit the nuisance or the effect of this proposal on adjacent property. So basically, you have the right to set conditions that will help make it less impactful on those things around it.
Any further questions of Board members? Well, I'd like to follow up on what Mr. Coe had to say there with regard to, I'll call them heavier uses that would be outright permitted. An example perhaps, I think, but you can correct me if I'm wrong, would be the FedEx location out there. That did not have to be up here before this Board, did it?
That is correct.
Okay, and what another one is Montana Precision Manufacturing, is that correct?
That is correct.
Now, with regard to those two uses or businesses that are located out there, you, we, Butte-Silver Bow, the zoning Board of Adjustment, the Planning Board, could not condition any permit based upon whether lighting is available or not, or what type of lighting. Is that also correct?
That is correct.
Okay. With regard to a term that you used in your presentation, you talked about dark sky compliant. Could you explain that a little bit further for us?
Sure. Dark sky approved lighting is a third-party certification that is provided to lighting, lighting designs and installed lighting projects to minimize glare, reduce light trespass, and reduce light pollution. And in order to be certified, they have to restrict the amount of upward-directed light that a, a project produces, avoid glare, avoid overlighting, utilize dimming and other appropriate lighting controls, and minimize short wavelength blue light in the nighttime environment.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. That covers a couple of questions I had. Do any Board members have any further questions? Okay, thank you. The proponent, the applicant now has an opportunity to step forth and provide any additional information that it may feel is appropriate for the Board to consider tonight or later on. Would you come forward, please, sir? Is the light still on for you?
Hit that. Can everybody hear me clearly in the back? I always have a tendency to sometimes mumble or get low with my voice, so if somebody in the back row can tell me if I'm not speaking clearly enough, I wouldn't mind somebody just saying you could speak up. So first of all, I would like to thank everybody that came out tonight, especially the Board members, and taking your time to serve us through your community, and also the Julie and Joella taking their time as well to present a really detailed staff report that I think is very well detailed enough for what we're proposing here at this site. Currently Maverick is the intended use for this parcel. We are in the process of purchasing seven acres of the 17 acres. So we would be taking that most north portion of the project. If you could go to the next slide, Julie. Kind of about tell you who you, we are. Maverick isn't totally into Montana yet. We're in the current process of completing a store in Helena. They're on the, the intersection of I-15 and Saddle Drive up in, in Helena. And kind of who we are, our owner is wanting to build the coolest convenience experience on the planet.
Coolest?
The coolest convenience store on the planet.
Thank you.
And our motto, of course, is Adventures First Stop. Next slide. Currently Maverick is in 12 states. As you can see, Montana is still white. We're still about a month and a half from completing that store in Helena, and that will be our first store located in this great state. Also, we have recently acquired in the last couple of months another gas facility that is located in the Midwest. So currently, we're in 12 states, about to be in 13 when that Helena store is completed. And we are currently with that other brand. We're in 20 states. All right. Can we hear me a little bit better now? Thanks for saying that. Okay, next slide. Thanks, Julie. Our people, so Maverick owns and operates about 400 stores in these 12 states. Maverick employees are about, range around 4,800 of them. We like to call most of the people that we have at our locations Adventure Guides. This particular store will employ about 15 to 20 employees. All our employees are trained in 40 different aspects of their job. They go through store sales, alcohol sales, management, identifications of minors, things of that nature, and security services as well. We're, Maverick is a family-owned business. All our stores are owned by the company. We don't have any franchisees that operate any of our stores. So all 400 stores are operated by Chuck and Crystal Maglet, and we continue to keep that that way. And even in addition of our new acquisition, we'll still keep those as company stores. Next slide, please. Our exteriors, we, we have that Adventures First Stop branding. We're, we show our stores as more of a earthy kind of that, just before you're going to go hiking, just before you're going to go on an adventure of some sort with either your UTVs or your boats, or just to do your shopping around town. As you can see, our stores are kind of those earthy tones representing a step into adventure, of course. Our typical branding is steel trusses, wood trusses, wood trims, cultured stone, glass, hardy board, and stone elements, along with the metal siding that you see on that particular gas station. Next slide, please. Interior-wise, again, we, we continue with that branding of Adventures First Stop. One of the things we do with our stores currently is we have murals that are pictures from the local state we are in. So this particular store is in Idaho, so most of the sceneries you see above the coolers and above the soda fountains are sites within the state of Idaho, and that continued branding will happen with our stores here in Montana as well. One thing you can see in the background there is a bonfire grill. On our premises, we have a grill that supplies burritos, Detroit-style pizzas, tacos, a sandwich bar, quesadillas, things of that nature, so you can fuel up before you go on your adventure. Next slide. Maverick takes, takes special attention to the environment. We kind of go above and beyond what we're normal convenience stores do. We use non-corrotable, flexible plastic piping. We use fiberglass for our underground storage tanks. We use state-of-the-art leak-detection systems that are monitored 24/7, so just in case that there's anything that leaks within underground or above ground. One of the other things we have is a vapor recovery system where our, our tanks are filled, so those vapors don't get mitigated, or they get mitigated so they don't go out into the environment. Landscaping, of course, is one of the requirements that Julie presented. We meet the city's requirements for landscaping. We keep them low and, and just enough to make sure that we have a comfortable site for when you come into one of our facilities. Safety is another one of those very important things for not only our customers but for our employees. Our sites are well-lit, but the, that light is directed at mostly where there's interaction between vehicles and pedestrians. We focus our lights towards the store, and we want to make sure that we're a good neighbor to our local neighbors so that we don't pollute the, you know, our lights don't pollute the, the neighboring parcels, just as Julie described. One of the other things you'll notice in our stores is we have large windows at the front of the store. That's so our Adventure Guides can see out into the forecourt, so that we can make sure that the safety is being, is being handled outside the store as well, including the monitors that we have for our security cameras. Okay, next slide. Kind of wanted to address this because of the, and I, I really do want to thank everybody for coming out. This is part of the public process, and I mean, that's why we send out notices, that's why we put a posting out on the site, is so everybody can come in. And I appreciate all the information that was sent to city staff. It was forwarded to us, and we were able to read those comments, in addition to going onto the Facebook page that was for the drive-in. Kind of go a little bit more specific on our lighting. Maverick has a, we just maintain our lighting in our critical guest-employee safety points. Some of the things we do specifically for our stores is we have a low-light canopy lights that are, that have a low profile. What that means is our lights and our canopies are kind of recessed, so you can't see that glare from a distance away. It's one of those things that help us reduce those glares that people can see with direct light and seeing it. Fixtures along the perimeters are equipped with louvers. They are sometimes equipped with shields if we need to. It's one of the benefits of LED lighting is we're now able to put little individual louvers, similar to the lines you have in your home, that you can direct that lighting to the areas that are needed, so you don't get light spill onto the neighboring property. All our exterior lighting is controlled with dimmers underneath the canopies. So during nighttime, when we don't have customers underneath our canopies, those dimmers will shut down the lighting illumination 75 to 50%, depending which canopy we're discussing, whether it's the commercial canopy or the forecourt where the pedestrian cars are. And of course, all fixtures point down with zero uplighting, so that, that kind of lends itself to that dark, dark sky compliance. The other thing I put in here just because of the comments that were coming, this is a store sales of both our fuel transactions and our in-store transactions for a store that we have in southern Utah. It's located along I-15. This gets a lot more customers than we anticipate here in Silver Bow, but as you can see, towards the 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM and later into the hours, you can see how our, our sales drift off. So since we're not a truck stop, and I kind of will go into that in a second, but we don't have overnight parking, so these sales drop off towards the evening. As you can see, the magenta line at the bottom is weekend sales and fuel transactions, and the cyan line up on top represents what it is during the weekday. Next slide. I think this is well-talked about, just, I think we're going to be a great neighbor for the, the drive-in, just because of what other options there are out there. I think we are going to be a good neighbor to them, and it's especially a great neighbor than most people that would be wanting to locate on this particular lot. Next slide. This kind of goes along with our beer locations within our stores. Since this is a family drive-in, I just wanted to show you where our beer cave is and how we have locks on the doors. We also have a great program with our security staff and our Adventure Guides in recognizing minors and not selling to that point. Our Adventure Guides, our store managers, go over daily on how to make sure that we identify people that are, shouldn't be accessing alcohol sales. Next. Again, here's that glass feasibility. Some of the concerns, I think, from the comments, have to deal with the residences and how we maintain and promote security within our stores. And as you can see, we have a great lighting as it looks out to the forecourt and to that external parking. Landscaping-wise, we keep landscaping to a minimum low cover, so that you don't have places where people can find refuge. We have 24 CTV cameras around the property that are monitored not only in our stores but also in our headquarters down Salt Lake City, Utah. Next slide. Again, those are those 24 cameras that are up 24/7. And one thing is Maverick, I don't know how many people have maybe have visited a Maverick store when they're on their travels. We really like to be involved in the community. We feel our places are a safe place, a good place of refuge, because we're open 24/7, and our employees are, want to look out for the well-being of the neighborhood. Okay. Okay, continue. Again, our, our store location will be here. As you saw in the application, 17 acres are being considered for a conditional use. The reason why we have 17 acres for the site, even though we're not planning to occupy all that, is because we have to get the conditional zone for the lot that is currently present. We intend to subdivide this property so that we'll have our own 7 acres for the site, and then the rest will be up to the, the seller to understand what he has proposed for the, that southern half of his property, that 10 acres. He'd be allowed, of course, to do those items that are allowed in the RM2 zone, and if we're approved, he'd even have the ability to put a competing convenience store next to us, unless I put it in the real estate document that he can't. I'd have to talk to somebody else about that. Next slide, please. This is our site plan. As you can see, we're a greater distance from the drive-in movie theater. I think this is one of those things that make this a, a good feature that would be applicable to being a good neighbor to the, to the drive-in itself. If another user was to come in, there's no hesitancy. They could put a large building or a large silo next to the property line. There would be more interference with the customers themselves at the drive-in. As you can see there, we're planning on about 7 acres of that, 17 acres. Our building size is about 6,000 square feet. If you were to go look at the store that we're currently under construction in Helena, it's close to the same square footage as this one. The only difference is, is this one has a rear door. The one in Helena is, the commercial canopy is to the side of the building, so they are able to go out through where the picnic tables are. Next slide. Oh, could you go back to that slide? So just want to discuss why we're a convenience store and a fuel center versus a truck stop. So Maverick's, how we do our stores and how we have created our model is we're really looking for those customers that are, are getting through your town or within your town, and give them a place to stop and get a convenience of either food and fuel supply. As you can see, we have a forecourt in front, which has six pumps, six dispensers. That is mostly driven for your pedestrian traffic, your, your automobiles. In the rear of the store, you'll see a canopy of what we call a commercial canopy. There, there's four pumps. Two of those dispensers may or may not be designed for commercial trucks. And what I mean by that is you have a primary dispenser and you have a secondary dispenser so that the, the commercial truck can fuel their tanks from both sides. And so we might have probably up to two lanes, maybe one in this particular location that would have that convenience for those commercial truckers. One of the things that separates us from being a truck stop, of course, is we don't allow overnight parking at our stores. The two parking stalls for trucks you see just south of that commercial canopy, there's, those are striped to show that there's only 30 minutes that they can be parked at that location. So the idea is that these commercial truckers can, of course, fuel up, stop, run into the store, grab some supplies, and then leave and go on their, their way. We don't sell any commercial products with inside the store, like a Love's or a Pilot where they sell a commercial trucking equipment. Those are the things that we don't do on our, inside our stores. In addition, we don't have any showers or lounge areas with free Wi-Fi or anything of that nature that cater to a truck. Ours is just to give them a lane and to keep on moving down the road. Okay, next slide. This is typical store lay, this layout, and in addition to how we recess our, our TUs on our roofs, we try to minimize the, the view to those sidelines from people down on the ground. In our case, we're going to have a little difficulty because of the, the elevation of the roadway. Of course, you're going to be able to look down as they cross over the I-15, they'll be able to see down on the top of our store. Our current floor plan of our, our site plan and grading shows that our store will probably be about five to six feet over the eastern boundary of where cars are parked at the drive-in. So we'll be, the drive-in will be lower than we will be up on our, on our site. In addition, we're about 170 feet off that property line. As you can see, our stores are really open concept. That bonfire grill is to the rear. The Venture Guides work there in the front of the store. As you can see, we have a lot of coolers and a beer cave on the upper corner there. In addition, one of the things Maverick is really known for is the cleanliness of our bathrooms. As you can see, our bathrooms are really oversized. That allows us to keep them cleaner, in addition to making it more family-oriented, that people feel comfortable, oh, you can just run in there, have your children run in there, go to the facility and feel like it's a safe, clean space for them. Next slide. This is a typical elevation of what we're looking at. Again, this is a prototype drawing, what we use for our stores. Again, we'll work with local building officials to meet the requirements of elevations and building materials. Next slide. So that's the front, of course. These are the side profiles in the rear of the store. Next slide. And that's kind of a, an elevation view of what this particular store would look like. Okay, next slide. Typical branding of Adventures First Stop with our logo there on our canopies. These canopies are about 20 feet in height. If we were to put a screening fence along that western property of eight feet, in addition to the five feet we're above the parking for the drive-in theater. Rough calculations, you'd have to be on the far side, the, the far west side of the drive-in to see the, the side of our building, maybe about five feet at the top of the roof that you might be able to see from that angle with that proper screening. And we understand the need for the screening, especially with headlights, as they come into our facility, and in addition to as the trucks turn around. As you might have saw on the site plan itself, our commercial lanes will point the headlights while they're fueling towards the interstate, not towards the drive-in theater. Next slide. Typical palette for us, of course, we'll, again, Typical palette for us, um, of course, we'll again work with any restrictions the city or the county may have for that particular store. Now, this is our typical palette for one of our locations. I think that is all I have for questions. Again, I'm here as, to ask, you know, answer any questions that the city may have or the residents as well. I also have a representative from my engineering firm here as well, if he needs to answer any technical questions. But we're grateful to be here in Butte and Silver Bow. And kind of on a personal note, um, one of the only benefits, there are very few benefits that happened during COVID. And one of those was the actual rise of drive-in movie theaters being used again. We have one in Salt Lake that I frequent, um, so I understand the importance. And if I thought I was not going to be a good neighbor, I, I would understand the public's concern, but I really do think we're going to be a good neighbor to that drive-in. In addition, far better than some of the things that could come in, so thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, sir. I think we probably have a couple of questions. And my question would be with regard to the conditions that the planning director, Julie Crane, read into the record. Have you received a copy of these conditions?
Uh, not the detailed one that she spoke in, but I was paying attention, um, the other ones I was able to understand. The only one that was a concern to me is screening, of course, of lights, you know, and headlights as they come into the facility and as they're navigating in, is one thing. It's hard to do the sound protection, especially with this particular site. So I don't think we're going to be noisier than the freeway as trucks are circulating within our development. I mean, we're not a heavy trucking facility, we're not a truck stop. And I think the noise of the trucks that are passing, you know, going seventy-five, eighty miles per hour on I fifteen create more noise than we do as we'll be circulating within our store. Things that I've talked to Julie about is, you know, screening, of course, with vinyl fencing, eight-foot vinyl fencing, to take out those headlights from going across those that are in the thing. But so, sound barriers are a little bit more difficult to put in is how much they can mitigate sound travel, especially when the highway's casting over us, if that makes sense.
There'll be plenty of noise from the highway, we understand that. But you're, you are in general with a minor possible exception in accordance with these conditions?
Yes. Yeah, those are typical things that we as Maverick wanted to provide to our neighbors.
Okay. I don't have any further questions, we'll ask if my, if my fellow board members might have any questions that they'd like to address to you. None from Stephen or Brian? John Garrett?
Oh, sorry, I didn't, I may have missed that. So my name is Richard Piggott, P-I-G-G-O-T-T. I am a site development manager for Maverick Incorporated. Our offices are located at one eighty-five South State Street in Salt Lake City, Utah. And um, I believe this PowerPoint presentation would be available to people because we've already read into the record. My contact information is on that first slide.
Yeah, this'll all be part of the record, as will this hearing.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this point, I'll ask if there's anybody present that would care to speak in support of this application. So if anybody present would care to speak, yes, sir, Justin Fortune?
My name is Justin Fortune. My address is ninety-six Liberty Lane here in Butte.
I think you're going to have to talk up a little bit, Justin.
How about now?
That sounds good.
Okay, uh, Justin Fortune, ninety-six Liberty Lane. I'm here on behalf of a representative of J. Fortune Construction and Commissioner. I think any economic development in Butte is good. I think it helps everybody, I think it helps the community grow. I've been involved with most of the development out there, I think it's a good fit for the area. These, these kind of projects keep our business alive. It, uh, it helps us, it helps our subcontractors, it helps the thirty employees that work for us every day. The, these construction projects, Butte needs to welcome them with open arms. They, uh, I think anybody who's seen a Maverick knows they take pride in their place. It's a, it's a good fit out there, I think they, they're willing to be a good neighbor. We, we need more economic growth in this town, I think everybody sees that, and uh, I just hope everybody supports it. I, uh, I'm a firm believer that a not in my backyard mentality just kills us. It, it leaves us in the past, and uh, I hope that uh, you guys look, take a hard look at what, what this does. I, as I stated, it helps our employees, it helps every contractor in town. They, there's twenty new jobs that they create, and I think after the first store, they'll just keep growing. And I think it just, they'll be a great community partner for us.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else that would care to speak in support of this application? You're just leaving. Anybody else? No, I'll ask if there's anybody present would care to speak against the application. Yes, sir, if you could, saw you first, if you could come forward and identify yourself by giving your name and address?
My name, my name is Fred Parker, and my address is ten eighty-seven Rose Gulch Road in Butte, which is down in Buxton. So I'm, I live in, in the not-too-distant uh, area of, from where this is going to be put in, but I'm not here to talk about um, how it's going to affect our community or, or that. My concern was this afternoon, I drove around Butte, and I don't know if anybody's aware, but you know how many gas stations we have in Butte? I counted twelve. Do we need another gas station in Butte? That's something that somebody with a lot more power than I have will have to answer. But I don't think we need, for thirty-four, thirty-five, forty thousand people, thirteen gas stations. Not only that, but the, um, the thing that does concern me is the, uh, and reference to the um, um, property next to it. Uh, I've been there, not very often, but I have enjoyed going there, and it's been here for decades. Now, there's no way, we can talk about mitigation. I owned a construction company for, for several decades, and I put in uh, mitigation, uh, noise mitigation of various times, things from trees to walls. Yes, it will lessen it, but it won't get rid of it. And we were, it was previously mentioned that the trucks, well, they won't make as much noise, uh, just about the same as going down the highway. Well, when a truck is going down the highway at sixty, at seventy miles an hour, it isn't accelerating, it isn't decelerating. And if anybody's been around a gas station or in town, when trucks are accelerating, they're extremely noisy. And it is going to impact that drive-in. As far as, I, I listened to light mitigation, and yes, the ambient light, you can direct that. And I, I've had projects where we have directed it. However, he, 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 he's already said that his gas station's going to be, I think it was about five feet higher than, than the uh, uh, than the drive-in. Well, people, you can't mitigate light from the headlights going in and out. It's going to shine, it's going to turn, it's going to hit, and that's going to destroy that. So, and that's, you know, that's what I have to say. I, I think, the other thing is, I moved to Butte after I retired, uh, because, because of the community. I mean, we are a very close-knit community, and we are a very supportive community. And I won't mention any names, but we have a, a local state, um, company that truly supports this community extensively. You know, they are, they are a gas, you know, a, a gas station company. But I can, I know for a fact that they spend thousands and thousands of dollars and give back to our community. Not that, not that this company wouldn't, but I don't know. I do know that our company we have now, they do that, and they do that graciously every single year. So it kind of boils down to, you know, we support loyalty and from our community, or do we support the bottom line that we're going to make more money on taxes? And I, I really appreciate your opportunity to hear what I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Is there anybody else that would care to speak in support of this application, ma'am? Or in opposition to this application? If you identify yourself, please.
I'm a little nervous.
No, don't be nervous.
I'm Holly Hansen, and I'm one of the owners of the Drive-In Theater that Mr. Piggott, all right, is, would, is expressing interest in being our neighbor. And first of all, I have a, can I ask you all a question?
No.
No?
No, that's not the way it works, ma'am.
Oh, okay, seriously. Well, that acreage is seventeen acres, and I believe that the FedEx and the Precision Products places take a lot more than fifteen acres. And only half of that acreage really could be used for heavy equipment, in and out shipping, plus it's so close to the off and on ramp of the interstate. So I'm not sure that, I'm not convinced that a business like that would want to come to that piece of property specifically. Now, I'd like to address the drive-in. We've been there forty-seven years, this is coming up with forty-eight. And it is not a compatible business with a gas station, fuel, fuel center, convenience store located next to the drive-in. It's a commercial development, yes, but it would violate the conditional use requirements as it is not a complimentary business to our business, and would not be in harmony with the existing requirements as it is not, it's in a quiet rural neighborhood to the east. As mentioned in the seventeen of the staff findings and the evaluations, the drive-in would be, I say would be, not if, would be extremely affected. We require darkness for optimal viewing, and the sale of our snacks is the largest part of our revenue because most of our film remit goes to the film companies. So if we don't have our food sales because people stop at the convenience store next door, well, you can see that we'd be not lasting very long. The problems with the development are the light pollution, which many people have already discussed, noise pollution, air pollution, and traffic safety getting in and out of there while a lot of traffic is trying to move on in, in and out. How can we keep a fuel stop, people from stopping at the fuel stop, hopping over the fence or running around it? Because we haven't really seen a full development of what they want to do from coming in. And a long high fence required down the entire property. That's like, I'm not sure the length of the property, but it's over nine hundred feet. There's many other concerns, and I, I sent them on in a list here, emailed them in to the use, so I'm hoping that you'll be able to read those. I also have a letter from Kathy Maloney who couldn't make it this evening, and I assume that you all have that to read, probably lots to read.
We do, we've received those, and we do have lots to read.
And I appreciate everything that's being done, and I appreciate all the people that have come here to support us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anybody else that would care to speak in opposition to this application? I saw that lady there first, so if you could come up and identify yourself, please? Introduce yourself and introduce your partner, please.
My name is Alissa Button, and my address is twenty twenty-six Gaylord here in Butte, Montana. Um, I'm here to oppose this because I work at Montana Precision Products, and I love the drive-in. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. I love the drive-in, it's one of my favorite things. I have a toddler, it's one of the very few things we can do to see cartoons. And, you know, we don't get to enjoy that family time, you know, in a regular theater yet. And I know many families enjoy it. Like I said, I work at Montana Precision Products, so I'm aware that FedEx is already an issue for the drive-in. It's already been a nice sort, so to add more light, more pollution with just, as everyone else has already stated, it does concern me. Taking away the pleasure of the drive-in, number one, for families. And number two, for the people that work there, because as that lady has just stated, they, they live on what we buy from their snacks. And we have a gas station that has pizzas and all these other wonderful things. No, nobody's going to want to buy from the drive-in anymore. It's already been an issue for them as it has been for Rocker. But to bring up Rocker, that's already right there. Uh, to bring up the first gentleman's point, do we really need another gas station right there? There's a whole hour between Rocker and Dillon that they could take up. There's a whole other hour between us and Deer Lodge that they could take up. That area right there particularly would be detrimental, not only to our community, but our pleasure of the drive-in. There's a coffee shop right there on the corner that we can use now that has food. Also, Montana Precision provides other companies to come in with food trucks for the area to enjoy. So I feel like we have our snacks, we have our food for the area that is provided for the workers. And it doesn't cause any kind of issues or detriment to the drive-in. I'm done. And that's all, that's all I have to say.
Thank you both for your comments. Is there anybody else that would care to speak in opposition, ma'am? If you could step forward and identify yourself? There you go, red light comes on.
I'm a little nervous, sorry.
Don't be nervous.
Um, my name is Ellen Johnart, and I own the drive-in with my parents. I am against this, this is, we're in forty-seven years. My two boys work there with us, they're on the third generation. Sorry, um, we have customers that travel from all over the state to come here to, to come to our drive-in. We have families who regularly come from Dillon, Helena, Missoula, Bozeman, Deer Lodge, just to name a few. Each summer, we have families travel through the Butte area because they want to make seeing a drive-in movie a part of their trip. Patrons who travel from outside the area, stay the night, eat dinner, enjoy our water park, and shop in Butte. This brings revenue to the Silver Bow County. As much as we enjoy getting to meet new people outside of the area, we, our greatest support is our Butte community. We give family and friends a place to gather and spend quality time together. Approving this permit would not only be a loss to us, but to the community. A gas station next to the drive-in would cause noise, air pollution, bright lights, which is all negatively affecting the viewing experience of our customer. I'm sure likely responses to this problem, well, let's construct a large fence. A fence can create glare and can fully block the light pollution. Our business relies on a dark environment to provide the best product for our customers. We have moviegoers that enjoy sitting outside under the stars, rolling the windows down, and this will no longer be able to enjoy this experience due to the air pollution, increased noise caused by the convenience store. If you visit a gas station, you know, they are bright and often very noisy. Our customers want to enjoy their motion picture dark, quiet, and peacefully. This is not compatible with our existing business. Like, um, they said, it's on the highway, it's going by fast. They're sitting there, they're idling, they can sit there for three minutes and idle their truck. That's three minutes of disturbing somebody else, and then a new truck comes in and there's three more minutes. And I'm sorry, I'm really passionate, like, we, this is family. And I just want to thank everybody for coming up, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would care to speak in opposition to this matter? Ma'am, you've raised your hand before. No, no, I meant you. Okay, yeah, could you identify yourself, please?
I touched it, sorry, sorry.
No problem.
So as a member of the community, I will say that I'm going to be...
Ma'am, could you identify yourself?
Oh, my name is Darian McCracken, I live here in Butte. Uh, my address is eight twenty-two Emma Street. And full transparency, as authentic as I can be as a human being, myself and my partner spend a lot of time going out to the drive-in. We're, there's a, our community has a lot, but also it, there's certain things about it where we can pride ourselves on having it being homegrown, and the people who are there who are offering us all the same space every year, it's consistent. You go there, they remember what your name is. They go there, remember the movies that you've seen previously. They know you for who you are, not just as a customer. It's not, you're not there just because you're fueling them. But I also want to point out that it is important for their concession sales as well, because my mother was a manager of a movie theater, I know how that works. Ticket sales do not boost their revenue the same way that people think that it does. The concessions are what helps keep it thriving. The concessions are what helps keep it thriving. Am I going to believe that everybody is completely honest when they go into that drive-in, that that's what they're they're going there to put money to keep it going? Unfortunately, no. But these guys are consistent, these guys have been here for so long, they want to offer us this. When we were going through COVID, they found a way to stay open and found a way for us to all be able to come together in a time where we were all stuck behind doors. That's something that's almost unheard of in this day-to-day. I don't oppose change, but I also don't think that we should push out a staple that we have to fuel something else. They're a staple. They're what keeps me going in the summer, this is what gets me excited for my year. I'm a film guy, I'm here for it, they know what they're doing, they're people, and they wear that on their shoulder day in, day out. So I'm here to support them in whatever way I can, no disrespect to anybody else, but they deserve to hear this. So that's all I really wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate your comments. Ma'am, the lady raising her hand right there, she's, there you go. And could you also identify yourself, please?
Yes, sir. All right, thank you, council, thank you, councilman. My name is Debbie McMahon, and I actually am one of the single-family residential properties across the road on Juniper Acres Road. I grew up out there, I moved away, and then my family and I came back. It has been a beautiful area to grow up in. The references to FedEx, of course, impending our lights has always been a little bit detrimental. FedEx did work with us and lowered their lights even for the drive-in, I believe, so that we can still walk outside of our door and see the pretty lights. Our kids can walk down the road, and we don't have to worry about traffic coming up and down the road. When the FedEx actually went in and they were saying, I know that people are not going to go that way, hopefully, I can't tell you how many semis we had drive down there, either turn around at the end of my mom's road, turn around in our driveway, get stuck on our road, my husband had to try and help people back up. I mean, so there's gonna be problems like that, no matter what. People that aren't from here, the truck drivers, they are not sure where they're going, nobody reads the signs, so they're not gonna know at all. I I meant to reiterate that, yeah, there are there is gonna be loud noise from the trucks idling. He said they can sit there for thirty minutes, they typically don't cut their engines for thirty minutes, they keep idling. Another big fear of mine is security. I know he said something about security. Our Butte Silver Bow Police Department, we all know, is minimal. We appreciate everything that they do for the county, the Highway Patrol, if they're on a call, we see them racing out, but who knows how long it takes them to get to a certain place before they can hinder assistance to anybody. Security guards, granted, they are, you know, doing what they can, but when it comes to certain people, they are not gonna put their life on the line, and they should not have to put their life on the line. So we might have somebody out there doing who knows what, maybe soliciting who knows what, and we just don't really need that in our little area. We have over twenty homes on our side of the highway. We don't need that kind of people out there. His building looked fabulous, I think I have been to the one in Helena, but I don't believe that it's surrounded by the business like the drive-in that has been there forever and ever. Our family comes in to visit, they have to go to the drive-in, that is one of their highlights. Our grandkids come, and that's what we need to go do. You're taking away a mainstay of the country. There's, I believe, one gentleman told me on the way in that there was maybe thirty drive-in theaters left in this United States of America, and we have one of them. I mean, how lucky are we to have that? These guys put their life and soul into it, you can see them working on the property all times of the year. They're out there, they're putting up their berms so that you can see well that there's never a piece of trash. And as far as the other part goes, where he says they're gonna be putting up the trees and the bushes and whatnot, and that's grand, but right now, there's really nothing wrong with it because we all are used to, you know, our natural habitat. The deers go there, the bunnies go there, the fox go there. I mean, birds are flying everywhere, we've got our natural water source over there, and I just we're taken away from that. And I am not sure what's on that side of the highway for water and sewer, I assume that you guys have all delved into that because that's gonna be another huge, huge problem if they are digging into the water resources that we have out there. And then, just like everybody else has said, we've got two beautiful gas stations right there at Rocker that do the best that they can, keep everything clean, supply everything that people need as they're traveling through. I just don't, I just don't see it as a plus for our community. And the other thing that I did want to say, the bus does stop there on both sides of the highway during the school year for the kids getting on and off for the high school students. Granted, they're not little kids, but they are high school students, and that cannot always be a safe environment for them either. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else that would care to speak in opposition? And sir, if you could identify yourself, please?
Charles McIntosh, I live off of German Gulch Road, and I'm an attorney in town. And one question that I'd like to ask, you said we could ask questions?
No, sir.
I can't ask him a question?
No, you cannot.
All right, that's fine. So I'm gonna I'm gonna guess here, but he's gonna have a sign that says how much the price of gas is, and it's gonna have to be visible from the interstate, and it's gonna have to be tall. And there is no way they're building a fence high enough to cover that. So we will know while we're at the drive-in what we can get gas for five cents cheaper at Town Pump, but that, I mean, we're gonna see it the whole time. There's no way you can mitigate that. And then, living on German Gulch, one of the concerns that I have is during the summer, thankfully, they have great support. But one of the things that that brings in is a lot of traffic. And before they open up, the road to the drive-in is always a parking lot. And it's awesome because they people are going to the drive-in. I do not believe that that exit staying one lane can sustain the traffic for a drive-in and then any other business, whether it's anything that has people coming in and out, it's just not gonna work on those days. And I know that they are not as busy apparently during those times, but there's just no way that through traffic plus traffic going into the gas station is going to work. It's just gonna be impossible. So that would be my two points of concern. Thank you.
Okay, we appreciate your comments, thank you. Is anybody else that would care to speak, sir?
Yes, my name is Jens Hansen.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
My name is Jens Hansen. My address is one-three-four Rampart Drive. I'm one of the owners and operators at the Silver Bow Drive-In. And one of the things that Mr. Pickett had mentioned about the lighting and keeping the lighting down, well, that doesn't include the customers coming in and out. They could have all sorts of really bright lights, tall trucks that would shine over any kind of screen that they might put on there. And and also others have mentioned the the noise. A semi parked for thirty minutes, idling, that's pretty loud, and then they pull out, another one comes in, thirty minutes, there it goes. So that that would be a big deterrent for people wanting to come to the drive-in. And also, yes, the the tall sign visible from the highway, I don't, everybody at the drive-in is gonna see that sign lit up while they're trying to watch the movie. And I think that very well could, it could put us in real danger at the drive-in. Business, we've been there since seventy-seven, and we'd like to continue being there. And I thank you for letting me speak.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. Is anybody else that would care to speak? Sir, if you could come forward, please?
Sorry for the long delay. My name is Thomas Ryan, I live at thirty-one-eleven Philip Street. And yes, I do go out to the drive-in and took my dad out there until he passed this August. So it was the place to go. And they know us, and they say hi to us every time we come through and stuff. Now, I'm not gonna beat the horse, and a lot of my concerns have been answered or brought up, except one. We went out to the movies, I don't remember when, they probably do when Meg came out, and the traffic was backed up clear up to almost the bridge. And we were all pulled into the breakdown lane trying to get up to the movies. And we got lucky, I don't know how we did it, but we fit, we all saw Meg, we all enjoyed it. But I'll guarantee you that big truck behind me, he was very pissed off because it took him forever to get to the hub so he can get unloaded, and the five behind him. So the only question I have that I didn't hear answered was what are you gonna do about the on-ramp or exit ramp and stuff? You put a gas station in there, I don't care if it's a truck stop or not. You're gonna have a ton more people trying to plug up that one little entryway. And I don't mean to give these guys a bad rep for being clear back to the bridge, but when there's a good movie, we're all gonna go. I think the gentleman with the big beard back there, he mentioned it, but I'm not sure. But there we are. You're gonna need a four-lane road right through through that, at least down past the drive-in, just so that we can get in and out. Thank you, and you folks have a pleasant evening.
You too, sir, thank you. Is anybody else that would care to speak with regard to this matter, sir?
My name is Jeremy Carey. I live at one-one-nine-zero-nine-six Juniper Acres. And not only the drive-in's gonna be affected, is the neighborhood itself. You know, we both live, we all live on Dead End Road, right? So what happens is, is they don't park in Maverick, they're gonna come and park on our road. You know, we're the ones that pick up the garbage, the urine bottles, the trash, everything like that. You go to the drive-in, you don't see a piece of trash down that whole driving lane all the way to Rick Jones Way, there's no garbage. Those guys were cleaning the toilets themselves during COVID, have one single-family business. These guys have four hundred gas stations. You're not affecting four hundred convenience stores, you're affecting one drive-in theater. I don't see it viable for sound, noise, pollution, or even my kids going to the mailbox. I don't want truck drivers anywhere near it or anything, it's just not safe. And that's all I gotta say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anybody else that would care to speak, ma'am?
Hello, my name is Ashley Johnson, I live at forty East Granite Street, and I've been a member of this community for almost a decade. Every summer, I one hundred percent go with my friends and sometimes my family to that drive-in. It matters a lot to me. Not only does it matter to me, but it matters to this community. Living here for the past almost decade, I'm an advocate advocate for this community. I taught high school for eight years, and one of the things that I know is that teenagers do not have a lot of places to go, they just don't. And so there's this concept called third-party spaces, and essentially, it's a space where it evens the playing field no matter your economic situation, and it's mo- I mean, five dollars, seven dollars, like, that's especially when you buy the whole carload, that's a family-friendly environment. It doesn't matter who you are, it's not closed off to anybody as long as you can drive through those gates. That, to me, is is an important part of this community. I understand that a gas station may or may not close down the movie theater, but it's going to affect it negatively to the point where they might have to raise their prices. That will stop allowing it to be as much of a communal space if they have to raise their prices to keep the to keep it going. Overall, I live in Montana, I love in I love Montana, I've been here for since I was seven, and at this point, we have to realize that sometimes when we give something up, we can't take it back. And when it comes to the Silver Bow Dryan- Drive-In, excuse me, it's an increasingly rare gem, and its authenticity is worth preserving. It is much easier to preserve the night sky than it is to get it back if it is lost. The lighting, the sound, those things, if they close down, are a detrimental effect to the Silver Bow Drive-In. It's gonna be a triple trickle effect to our community. I still don't really quite understand why the seven acres needs to be completely next to the drive-in instead of at the other end, but I hopefully will get that question answered at some point. I overall just want to oppose this proposal and encourage control of the sound and light pollution and the safety around the Silver Bow Drive-In for future generations like the past fifty years have gotten to enjoy it, too. The next fifty years should also get to. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, if you could come forward, please, identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Carrie McGlynn, my address is nineteen-sixteen Reynolds. I've been here all my life. I'm opposed to this. I brought my kids, grandkids, to the drive-in, it's an absolute treasure. We 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 really need to preserve it and take care of it, and the the cars going in and out would be noisy and light, the lights, even with the fences, they're pulling in off the highway, the lights are still gonna be there, and I counted in my head, I believe there's sixteen gas stations in Butte, that's not including the eight-two in Rocker. So I really don't see that we have that great of a need. And I don't see how they could block the light well enough or the sound and the the, especially the semis, you know, there's if there's gonna be a gas station for semis, then that's gonna be, that will just ruin the the drive-in experience. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm Ron Schlosser. I live on Battle Ridge Road, which is two and a half miles west of this proposed site. My concerns are this, and I've lived out there for over twenty years. I enjoy all the development in the industrial park, and I think everybody in Butte Silver Bow ought to be real happy about that. The drive-in theater, I've not used it personally, but a lot of family members have, so I don't wanna see anything happen to that. But here's my real concern. The interstate interchange, you've got a single lane each direction across the interstate, and there's getting to be a lot of traffic on that. I would say try getting across there or making a left turn into this proposed site about four o'clock every weekday afternoon. You'll be waiting a long time. But anyway, I don't know if there's any proposals to improve ingress and egress, whatever you call it, into that industrial park, which includes the proposed site here and the drive-in theater. Don't know if there's anything planned, but that bridge is in serious need of repair, and with all the traffic out there, I'm I'd love to see how the Highway Department plans to do that. But anyway, that's my concern is more the interchange, how it could handle any more development. That's all I have.
No, thank you, we appreciate you coming tonight. Let's see anybody else with their hands up, is there anybody that would? Okay. Looks as though we can close the public portion of the meeting then. Well, not really, we have the applicant on behalf of Maverick does have the opportunity to present a rebuttal to the comments that were made in opposition. And I'd like to give you that opportunity, sir. Organize your notes.
Yep.
There's no rush.
Took me a second. I think I'm still good here. I don't want to take too much time, I I do love the passion of the people here in Butte, especially some of the the emails that I was able to read. You can understand there is a definite distinguishing character of the people that live here. To just answer a few questions that I could with regards to the traffic on the highway, we are working with MDT, we have had a traffic study completed. We've worked with them, and currently, there's been no mitigations required with the offramps or the bridge going across. But again, that's one of those things we're getting our ducks in a row with the Montana Department of Transportation. To go to the gentleman's comment about signage, signage is a separate permit, as I recall, and Julie can give me a nod if it's different, but that's a separate permit, as kind of what Town Pump did earlier in this meeting. Currently, we show our signage, and yes, it's a tall freeway sign, what we call a high-rise. Currently, we show our signage, and yes, it's a tall freeway sign, what we call a high-rise. Currently, we do show it in that northeast corner of the development. Of course, we'll work with local staff here on the placement of where that sign is along that location. One of the benefits is it's gonna be oriented perpendicular to I-15. So, in theory, you're looking at the side of the sign. You're not looking at the lit, lit sides that are on either side of it. And one of those things is light spilling off a sign isn't really the greatest thing because it's more illuminated rather than casting light. Again, we are along that whole frontage. If that sign needs to shift along that frontage, that's something we could work with the city staff when we, we do apply for that signage permit. Do love the passion for the, the drive-in. I understand that. I really do think we'll be a great neighbor for them, especially what could come in a, in a different form from another development. We're willing to work with the staff and adhere to those conditions that are part of this conditional use permit. Again, just to reiterate, there's a lot of allowed uses at this site that could be far more devastating, and I've seen it happen with, with, within my career. And so, I really do think we could be a great neighbor to the drive-in, support them in their needs, and work with them as we go through the process of doing our design work and getting our permits for the building permit. As I scan through this real quick, just to make sure, something I might have missed. I do like the idea of communal space, things of that nature. It, it's dear to my heart. It's one of the things that I like about Maverick, is we do try to encourage that as well. We have a lot of fans for Maverick just because of who we are and the product we put out into the local communities. I understand the, the, the question about why we need another gas station. We're different, a little bit more than these traditional truck stops there in Rocker. We cater to a different demographic. It's what we built our business on. We're good at it. You won't see car washes at our facilities. You won't see a trucking repair store. You won't see casino gambling in our stores either. We, we have stores in Las Vegas. We don't do gambling. It's just something we're not good at, and we don't want to waste time in something we're not good at and just do what we do exceptionally well. We really cater to the community and those that are just driving by. One thing that I do want to bring up, the way that a, a convenience store works is people don't usually go to a convenience store. They're not like, oh, I gotta, I really need to get that pizza tonight. Usually, we pull about seventy to eighty percent of our traffic just as people are driving by. That's where most of our customers come. It's one of those reactions where, oh, hey, I, I really would like a tasty beverage, which is what I always do, or I, I want to go grab a candy bar for my daughter on my way home. It's those kind of things that it's a, a, a reaction. And so, most of our, our customers are already on the road already. So, again, love to be in the community. Look forward to your responses, and we'll continue to work with, with them here in Silver Bow.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, well, this is a conditional use permit, so we have to make a decision within sixty days. We do not have to do it tonight. So, it would be either thirty days from now, our next regularly scheduled meeting in January, or one in February, if it's gonna go to sixty days. Often, since it's conditional use permits and special use permits, check with the board and see how they feel about whether they want to make a decision tonight or if they want to review all the information we've received. I personally have looked at a lot of emails, and my computer kind of fritzed out a little bit, so I didn't look at today's, and more has come today. And I would like to give all of the letters and emails the attention that they deserve. So, I personally would like to not make a decision tonight, but if the rest of the board wants to, I'm prepared to go along with it.
Mr. Chairman, I agree. I do think that I would like some more time to read some of the emails and, and the, excuse me, communications that we received and not make a decision tonight.
Mr. Chair? Yes, Stephen?
I, I agree also on the, the delay. I'd also like to ask if it's appropriate. There's a lot of things that have been brought up in the conditions that we would impose on this person that I think are actually germane to this board to make a decision. For example, the photometric plan, just requiring them to do it and not having a, an adequate, or not knowing if there's an adequate review, just requiring them to do it. I don't know if that's enough. Is it, is it appropriate to ask them to provide additional information?
I'll defer to the staff on that one, but I believe it is. We want to get all the information we can.
Yeah, so that, and if it is appropriate, I, I would suggest that, that the, the photometric plan and their plans for the, the noise mitigation, you know, be presented to this board before we meet and make a decision.
Typically, the applicants work with the staff on those matters. I don't know what a photometric plan is, do you? So, I'd like to know that. So, those are the things that we can talk about. Get information regarding.
Mr. Chairman, a photometric plan is a simulated light plan to understand how each fixture within the site would impact the, sort of the directional light coverage within the site. It's, it's a light study. It's just a fancy word for a lighting study.
It's a light study, okay. Thank you. So, are we all in agreement that we'll decide this perhaps next meeting? I think I'm prepared to do it then, or will be.
At this point, I concur.
Okay. John Garrett, you okay with that? So, there, there will not be a decision tonight with regard to this application because conditional use permit applications do not require that. Typically, they're like this. You get lots of information, and you would like to review that information before a decision is made. And I didn't see anything about today's emails, et cetera, so far. So, thank you, and thank you all for coming tonight, and thank you for your comments.